Good evening and welcome to the business meeting of November 17th, 2022. Tonight, the pledge, instead of, we're going to begin with the pledge, but because our focus is children at the beginning and throughout all of our work, the technology department has videotaped classes during the pledge, and so we are going to have Mrs. Galelos, Galelos class, fourth grade class, lead us in the pledge tonight. So they're there, and the flag is over there, so you can decide where.
Mrs. Galelos, fourth grade. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's a bit loud. Oh, thank you, Mrs. Galelos class. It's a work in progress, that's all right. It's our goal to keep students as our focus. So I'd like to open it up for public comments on any of the listed agenda items. I don't see any, so I would like to start with the consent agenda, please.
Result or approved consent agenda items two through 10 is presented to the board of this meeting. Second.
Questions or comments?
There are nine items on the agenda, and they include the approval of the previous meeting minutes, approval of CSE, CPSE placements, approval of an updated substitute listing, additional hours for various staff members. We're amending a retirement date due to a discrepancy at the state level. It affects it by three days. We're approving the winter 2022-23 coaches and stipends, as well as the fall 2022 postseason stipends. We're rescinding unpaid work members, workdays, excuse me, for a staff member due to a change in plans. The staff member did not need to use the days. And we're authorizing the superintendent to enter into an agreement with KG and D Architects for a five-year capital facilities plan update.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Resolution passes. So we're going to begin with our presentations this evening. Our first one is the Putnam Northern Westchester Student of Distinction recognition, and I'd like Dr. Ryan, who's here from BOSI's, to come and, and, I don't know who you brought with you, but can introduce all the people that you brought with you.
Thank you, Barbara, and good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure for me to be here tonight. As district superintendent of Putnam Northern Westchester, one of the highlights of my position is to get around to our 18 component districts and see a variety of different activities. And clearly overseeing the BOSI's operation is a highlight of the position as well. And tonight, it's really a great pleasure for me to reinstate the in-person student of distinction. We've been doing it virtually for a couple of years, but we're now back to an in-person celebration, so that's a great thing for us. Before I go to the presentation, I just want to publicly thank the administration of Putnam Valley Central School District, Dr. Luff and his staff. It's just a pleasure to work with this team. They're so forward-thinking, they're so involved as a participant and member across 18 components. You always like to see the school districts involved in regional decision-making and regional discussion, and Jeremy is really a high-water mark in that regard, so I just want to thank him for that. Mrs. Levine has been a former staff member of us and now is with you. And kind of a side note for me, several years back, I started an initiative of Mandarin Language in a few of our schools in the region. And I just want to say that Dr. Podesta and PV Elementary School has just done such a wonderful job in embracing that program and having youngsters involved in a cultural experience that's really special. I want to thank you, Barbara, and the board here for supporting that and for the really close, tight-knit relationship we have with the Putnam Valley Central Schools. The student of distinction this evening is really a great source of pride for me because oftentimes you think of career in tech and you think of the trades, and certainly that's a significant part of our programs. But we offer more than 40 programs at the Career and Technical Education Center. And one of the outstanding programs that we have is our program in graphic design and digital photography. And the Putnam Valley student this evening that will be recognized is Mackenzie DeGracia. And so, Mackenzie, I'll ask you to come up. And I also would ask, I'd ask Dr. Luff and Ms. Farmley to come forward as well. The certificate of student of distinction is really a special award for us, and this certificate is awarded to Mackenzie DeGracia for recognition for outstanding leadership, skills, academic progress, and community spirit in that really high-level program that we have at the Career Center. So congratulations to Mackenzie. I'm going to give this to Ms. Farmley, who will present the certificate, and Dr. Luff, who will present the medallion. I'm going to ask, I'm going to now ask our Career and Center principal, Ms. Day, to come forward and read a statement regarding Mackenzie.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So I'm very proud to present a very exceptional student from Putnam Valley High School, Mackenzie DeGracia. Mackenzie attends the Career and Technical Education Center at BOSI's for the graphics design and digital photography. She has taken full advantage of all the experiences and educational opportunities that are available to her as a student at the Tech Center. Mackenzie is a role model and a leader within the classroom. The computer graphics field is continually evolving and demands creativity and quick problem-solving, and Mackenzie works hard to use her skills efficiently and creatively. It all boils down to hard work and respect, says her graphic design teacher, Mr. or Mr., who is present here today. He says, "Mackenzie exceeds my expectations on a regular basis. She's always the first to volunteer her skills to help a fellow student. With her work ethic, talent, and people's skills, I know she will be very successful in whatever path her future takes her." On behalf of the Tech Center administration and staff, we are very happy to present Mackenzie DeGracia as a student of distinction from Putnam Valley Central School District. Congratulations, Mackenzie.
Also with us tonight is our Director of CTE, Ms. Bellistrari, and Aaron Armisto, who is Mackenzie's instructor. Aaron, thank you. In closing again, it's just a pleasure to be with you. It's always great to come to Putnam Valley. And again, Jeremy, Barbara, thank you for the invitation and for hosting us. And don't keep everyone too long tonight.
I try not to. And where can we see Mackenzie's work? If we wanted to see some of Mackenzie's work, where could we see that?
[inaudible]
Okay. Well, I'd love to see some of the stuff that she's done, so, thanks.
Yeah, if someone could share it.
We'll take, look at a digital portfolio and go forward and see what you can share with the board.
Yeah, and it would be great to post it on our website. It would be great. Congratulations, Mackenzie.
Mackenzie, the warning there is you may end up with your own board presentation soon enough, so. That'll be the next.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ryan.
All right, so for our second presentation this evening, I would like to invite up Mr. Michael Lee to give our technology update. Looking snazzy in the jacket. I like it.
I'm pretty sure I'm violating a couple of fashion, I'm committing some fashion crimes here. So I'm Mike Lee, Director of Technology. This is the technology update. You know, my wife got me a Fitbit recently, and my heart is racing so fast right now. I bet I'm getting zone minutes. Let's start with a, with the quote, "If we teach today as we taught yesterday, we rob our children of tomorrow." You know, I like this quote because it feels like there's a lot of forward motion to me, right? You can almost feel the momentum in the quote. So what have we been up to since the beginning of the year? And what do we do over the summertime? Well, let's start with some interactive flat panels. Now, the interactive flat panels that we got over the summer, they're not just displays, they're all-in-one devices that, well, I'm going to say revolutionizes curriculum delivery, right? And so how does this happen? Well, the new BenQ interactive displays, they've got a feature where the teachers can access all of their content without the computers. So let's think about this first thing. So the TVs themselves, right, with, with what? How do you do it? With a card like this, if you tap the side of the TV, right, it could access, it could go, and you will be delivered content from your Google Drive, and we even have a video server. You could tap into that as well. So what this means is, without a tether, without a laptop, you could go from room to room to room, and you could get your customized experience, and that will follow you along, right? You could essentially plan things ahead, get your stuff into Google Drive, and then boop, all your stuff is right there. Another feature these TVs have is you could easily record and share your lessons with students. So there's a feature where, when you hit record, it records your voice as well as what you're doing on the screen. And then when you're done, you could save that into your Google Drive, and then from there, you could share it with anyone who maybe would like to see the lesson again, or somebody who may not have been in the class. This is also an open and customizable platform, so whatever preferences the teacher sets, it will move with them to whatever display that they could tap their card to. These TVs also have built-in apps, so if there's a certain science app or music app that might be useful, we could load those into the TV themselves or itself. So right now, across the district, we've got 90 interactive TVs. Now, they're not all BenQ displays, but we're working on that. Right now, we've got 45 at the high school, 35 in the middle school, 10 at the elementary school. Now, this is an interesting statistic, 1,443 logins using just the card and the TV itself. So those are all instances of teachers using these displays without a laptop, right? Without just simply mirroring the display on the laptop, sort of like what we're doing now, actually. All right, now, how did we get there? Where are we going? So, oh, you know what? That font is a little small, isn't it? So I'll just kind of like dictate. So we discussed with some staff members of what exactly they wanted in a classroom display, and then we investigated what our neighbors were doing. And these BenQ displays actually kind of rose to the top. They were the ones that were getting the best reviews. And so then, over the summertime, we deployed this out to the high school, and then provided training over the summertime, and then also at the first superintendent's conference day. Now, at the most recent superintendent's conference day, we also provided training to all the TAs so they could also use these BenQ displays as effectively as they can. And now we're starting planning on phase two, bringing more BenQ devices into the middle school and the elementary school. Next up is Chromebooks at the elementary school. Now, the Chromebooks, they integrate smoothly into a single sign-on solution we have called Clever. Now, what this does is you only need to remember one password, right? And that'll then sign you into all of your other applications. And so that saves time on the students' end, and that saves time on the teachers' end. These Chromebooks are also a little bit smaller than what they were using before, right? Smaller keys, tiny fingers, they find it a little easier to use. These also are highly adaptable through Google Chrome extensions. That's good for any student who may have special needs, that maybe, maybe another language, or, you know, anything at all. There's a Chrome extension for anything. These are also much easier to deploy in case we ever need to go remote again, and the summer processing is super easy as well, because we just have to collect them, clean them, and that's it, right? There's no more re-imaging necessary, you know, like we have with regular laptops. So at the elementary school, we deployed 574 Chromebooks, and we have thus far had almost 51,000 logins, right? So the kids are definitely using them. Now, traversa, if you're like, what's traversa? Full speed ahead with our new transportation routing management software. This routing software is web-based for more flexible access, right? Our solution before was all hosted here on-site, and for security reasons, you had to be on-site to get it, because the server was right here. Now, it's web-based, and so if we were to ever go remote again, we could do all the routing remotely. This offers more precise routing, and it also has built-in fleet management functions. And just today, we added updated and detailed Westchester and Rockland routing maps so we could route all of our out-of-district kids. Now, AV systems, sweet sound of upgrades. Right now, we now have fully updated systems in the wellness center, elementary school old gym, middle school cafeteria, high school gym, and the press box. Now, what do I mean by the press box? I mean like the speakers that are sitting outside of the press box, pointed toward the fields. And what we did was we replaced all the aging components, such as blown speakers and amps, and there's Bluetooth audio streaming in all of these locations now. Now, I know it sounds complex, but we designed it so it's one touch on and off, set it and forget it. So what are some things that we're currently doing right now? Right now, we're taking a look at Google Play Books, and what this, it's like, it's a library of books online in Google, and the teachers can assign these books to kids through Google Classroom. And so the kids, once they get the books into their account, they could highlight, they can annotate, they could take notes in these books. And out of thousands of applicants, we were selected to be a beta tester. So right now, our English department is piloting this program. We're also focusing on in-house training. So as I said, like, over the summer, and also in the superintendent's conference day, we provided hours of training to staff members, both scheduled and on-demand, in the summertime and superintendent's conference days. Those were focused on the BenQ displays. We also have had Tech Tuesdays, where we're open to help anyone with anything, and we also have a drop-in policy, so you can just drop by and say hi, and we'll give you a Now, high school color wars, this is, this is kind of a really cool thing. We've continued the new tradition of live-streaming all of the events, right? Because live-streaming, that's like, that's the thing now, right? And some of these events were livestreamed only. And what's cool about the whole color wars event is, from a tech side at least, it's a real practical application of the real-world production skills. Like, these days, you could have a super-successful YouTube channel just using your iPhone, right? You could do that. But here, what we're teaching kids to do is using, they're using real cameras, they're using real audio equipment, real lighting equipment, real mixing equipment, right? Not just a phone. We're giving them, like, all of the tools that they need to be successful when they want to get a real production job. And as such, the entire community could participate in color wars, right? Like, not everybody could do, like, the tug-of-war, right? But if you wanted to participate in other ways, you definitely can, and this is one way you could do it. We're taking a look at iPads as assistive devices. One way we're looking at that is real-time language translations, right? So if I were having a conversation with somebody, and they were speaking English, and I was speaking computer nerd, right? And they said, "My printer's not working." And then I would say, "Well, do you see lights on the front of it?" On the device, it would print out the translation, and would say, "Are you sure it's turned on?" See, that's the translation there. We're also using these to look at assistive listening devices in the pack, so it'll integrate with our assistive listening system, and then you'll be able to hear more clearly through software running in the iPad. Now, looking ahead, what do we have to plan for? Well, just over the horizon, we've got, and I'll dictate this again, because it's a little small, we've got our multi-function device refresh cycle. Now, what that is, is we're going to evaluate the print and copy demands and make recommendations accordingly. Basically, we just want to make sure that all of our printers and copiers are right-sized for our use, and it's about time to start thinking about that. Now, number two and three, we've got our server and storage refresh that we've got to do, and also network core replacement that we have to do. Now, if some of you are kind of struggling to picture what number two and three look like, I think I can help you. Imagine Star Wars and Obi-Wan Kenobi, when he was trying to shut down the tractor beam, right, from the Death Star, that thing? That's basically like what number two and three would look like if you were to picture it, right? So I'll send with a little quote from NASA. "We turned towards the moon now, not as a conclusion, but as preparation, as a checkpoint toward all that lies beyond." Now, I like this because, when you think about it, it's sort of like a change in mindset, right? Like, so often, we have static goals, right? We want, "Oh, there's the moon. I want to get there." Or, "I want to do this. I want to get there." But what this is saying now is, we want to go beyond, right? So that's what we try to do as a technology team, right? We're always looking for ways to improve. We're always searching for ways to push. And these are the people we have to thank. And I'm really emphasizing team, because as a team, we accomplish all these things, right? As a team, we work together and we help each other so we could best help you. Thanks.
Thank you, Mike.
Can you talk a little about cybersecurity and what the district's doing about protection?
Sure. Well, we have, typically, districts have one firewall. We have two firewalls. We also subscribe to service through the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center, and we are also sitting behind their firewall, right? So just to, just for a threat to come in, they would first have to get by the RIX firewall, which is pretty locked down. And then after that, they would have to get through two firewalls here. So we're pretty, pretty buttoned up.
Thank you.
Do you want to talk a little bit about the education piece of that as well? I know you had mentioned to me regarding the number of individuals who have sort of self-reported receiving the direct deposit email or whatever it was.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Because I know that's, I mean, whatever percent of the time, more often than not, it's a user accidentally clicking on a link or opening an email.
So every year, we have cybersecurity training, and so that educates people on typical threats like, this is a spam email, this is a phishing email. And, you know, we have certain safeguards against that built into Google, like, Mail itself, but what we're finding actually is when people receive these emails, they've been trained up to the point where they report to us, "Oh, I'm just making sure you guys saw this." You know, I'm just pointing this out, which basically means that a lot of people, instead of clicking on them, they're just, they're reporting it, which is a pretty big step.
I have to say, I was at the play last week with a friend who has a hearing problem, and the play was wonderful, but, and she knew the story, so it made it a little easier. But I love the idea of having assistive listening devices in the pack for just that reason. I think it's not something I ever thought of, but I thought, when you said it, I was like, "Oh, my gosh, that's such a great idea."
Yep.
Anybody else? Sam or Joe?
Michael, can you talk about where we stand as far as the use of the Smart Schools Bond Fund?
Sure.
And what that's all going to, how far we're into it, and then what it's being used for?
Sure. I can speak in rough numbers. So we were allocated, it was roughly $950,000, and we used roughly $600,000, maybe $37,000 or so of that. We have about $235,000 left to spend on infrastructure updates.
And is that what two and three are, a big part of that?
Yep, yep, yep. And when we address items two and three, it still would not exhaust all of the Smart Schools funds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sam?
You've come a very long way, Michael. I remember you crawling through the airspaces over at the middle school when Dr. Hill was there. And we first hit the internet. You were wiring the place, literally. And to where now, it's almost phenomenal. It really is. And kudos to you.
Yeah, thanks.
And your dad, who really had an interest in the, you know, technology and of the school business. And you've carried that on very, very nicely. I'm very impressed.
Thanks.
So as a former technology director, and I'll admit, who knew 1,000th the amount of technology that you currently do? I do fully understand that as a service industry, the true strength of our technology is really the individuals on this last slide. And I am grateful for what they do for our schools. And I think everyone here, our teachers, our administrators, recognizes these individuals and the vital service they provide to our students, our staff, our parents, right? We're going to be more and more outreach and more and more involvement directly with parents. So I do want to take just this opportunity to acknowledge Alex and Matt and Laura and Dan, who's with us this evening, Ed, Doug, and obviously yourself. Because much of what you do is behind the scenes, the service you perform. Everyone just expects to work. And when you have an uptime of 99.99%, that expectation is realized. But I do recognize the tremendous amount of work that happens behind the scenes and how valuable these people on this last slide are to our students and everyone else in this district. So thank you to all of them, and thank you to you as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
I didn't introduce you yet. I had walk-up music. I was going to play like E C D C. All right, so our next presentation this evening, Dave Spiddles invited himself up. So he's going to give our facilities update. Thank you. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm here to give my facilities update for the fall. A lot of it is the work we do over the summer. During the school year, we're really, my whole team is really engaged in operational support for the students and staff here. So during the summer is when we have to cram it all in, like hanging 90 of those flat panels for you, Michael.
And moving another 40 next door.
Yeah. So I was thinking about, you know, I know we have a district mission and a child first and foremost. But thinking about specifically, you know, what my team in operations is here to do. And this came pretty easily to me. And it's to create and sustainably maintain a safe, healthy, and beautiful environment that reflects a culture of excellence and opportunity. So just something, that's a quote from me.
I just want to note from that picture, I know I yelled at you for not drawing any straight lines.
Yeah.
But it's totally better with all the curve lines you put in there. I want to give you public credit.
Trust me, Dr. Left.
For all your curvy lines in the courtyard.
Just trust me. So the presentation tonight is formatted with high school recently completed and what's underway. And then high school, middle school campus here. And then the elementary school campus, what we recently have completed and what's underway. And then at the end, we're going to look at some ideas for future projects. And these are just ideas. No money's been spent. Why isn't it going down to the next one? There it is. So some of the things we're doing is really buttoning up things that I needed to from the capital project. So we had a garden in the old courtyard at the middle school that was utilized by the students. And when we filled that in and made it into that learning commons, I always had it in the back of my head, "I need to recreate a garden here." So our team of custodian groundskeepers built this garden to my specifications this summer, or this spring, actually. And before the fencing was even around, we had the environmental club at the high school, thinking, working with them to plant a pollinator garden in there. And then the Go Green Club at the middle school. That's the pollinator. People see Mr. Lenhart there, working with his class. That's actually the fall cleanup. And then the Go Green Club from the middle school planted the vegetables that, do you see them there? And then something else we did this summer was upgrades to the softball and baseball fields. As you can see, they're in pretty rough shape. This looking here is the, one of the old dugouts, which was a fence around some blacktop. And you can see the fencing was all dented in. So what we've done is we got, we have new dugouts, got those delivered. Or at least two of them are in place. The other two will be as soon as the ground freezes. The fencing and netting is all new. And we actually got new home run fencing, the temporary home run fencing that goes up every spring. It just looks horrible to me. So we got some real professional-looking fencing that we're going to be able to slide in place for the season. So the gym in the middle school was another project we worked on in the capital project. We put new hoops up. Why is it skipping forward here? I'm sorry. There. Okay. So these were some finishing touches to that project. You can see the wall pads were all beat up. And so we replaced those this summer. And scoreboards. We, this is our team installing the new scoreboards. Those old scoreboards you can see there recorded my two points I scored as a ninth grader in 1982 on the basketball team, 1981. Anyway, they were sentimental.
Did you take it home and light up the table?
Sentimental to me. Sentimental. I was a great player. That was in 16 games, I scored two points. So here's what it looks like. There's what it looks like now, scoreboards up. You can remember the old dark wood wall that used to be where that PV is. We've redone, the windows are all new, the floor is new, basketball hoops. That whole wall's been redone, the far wall there, and new scoreboards. Last thing I'm going to do is we're going to put a decal like what's in the wellness center downstairs in that, behind the two main hoops.
Is there anything else we're going to do in that room?
Maybe the ceiling, Dr. Left, maybe, when we can afford it someday.
I keep teasing him that my name is still written on one of those yellow rafters up on the top of the roof.
The only thing that's left undone, right. So the middle school bathrooms, we did the one side of the academic wing bathrooms last summer. And this is what they used to look like. And this was driving me crazy. So we finally got all of the bathrooms to look more like this. So that's what they look like now. Whoops. Hand dryers, we installed hand dryers. And they were very popular for the administration and for the custodial staff. And so we put them in all of the gang bathrooms because paper towels would clog things and be a mess all over the place. And we burned through just tons of paper towels. So these have been a big hit there, little things. So other than hanging Mike's flat panel TVs all over the schools, we also accomplished this plaque wall downstairs that I've been trying to do for three or four years now. Our plaques used to be in all those glass cabinets downstairs, and they're stacked up behind each other. No one could see. And now those trophy cases are just for trophies. And we are expanding that wall. We've had a lot of, we're gaining more success in athletics. And we're actually going to be expanding that wall over the winter break down towards the wellness center to accommodate all of the success of our athletic teams. Something that's coming soon to the high school here is that curvy courtyard where the Aspire statue is in the last circle out there. We're going to build what we call a learning wall. This is paid for by the COVID relief funds. That we're working on funding outdoor opportunities is one of the things that they were funding for students. And this is something that is my design, so hopefully it comes out good. Anyway, there's a, it's going to be about halfway around that wall. And it's certainly going to really close in that courtyard. Where you can see on the bottom there, where it says Putnam Valley High School, those are 12-inch-high letters that you'll be able to read from Peak School Hollow Road. And that faces Peak School Hollow Road on the inside is where the students will sit. And hopefully that'll attract even more students and teachers to use that area. Over to the elementary school campus. You know, we are going to do some work, you'll see, in the courtyard over there. But there's, I was looking around that school, and just thinking about outside opportunities. This is the end of the first-grade wing over there. And it really wasn't in great shape and wasn't a very attractive place, as you can see. And wasn't inviting for students or teachers. And we, with the summer crew that was in here, spent a ton of time and turned it into that. So that's what it looks like now, seating areas, actual grass, that fence, everything like that. Outaround deck chairs for faculty to take a break and hang out. And for students, we have this area that we revitalize as well. That's all in the back of that wing. This is the area where the outdoor classroom was and still is. And it needed some work, so...
That was the kindergarten jungle area.
Kindergarten jungle, end of the K Wing, right? And that thing in front was an old pond that was, that we turned into a pond again. So, you know, this is what it looks like now. It's more attractive, more inviting. Those benches you see under that blue sail shade back there were built by our team. We actually built those benches this summer. And obviously the bench by the pond, and did that whole planting as well. This is the pond area that, this is a slide, it's in here because we had an Eagle Scout, Brian Palmo, volunteer to build this big table down there that's been really, really nice for the elementary school kids to sit around and look at the critters that they pull out of the pond. Another big project was revitalizing this outdoor modular classroom. Ms. Palmerly will remember this well. I think you were teaching in there when my son was learning next door in the room. So this hasn't been used for teaching, for classrooms in 12 or 15 years. I don't know exactly how long. But Dr. Left asked me to try to make it into usable space again. So two summers ago, we put a new roof on that was done by a roofing company. This is what the inside still looks like on one side. And the inside was just used, this is file storage. The other side was actually used for storage of stuff we didn't know what to do with. So we painted the outside this summer. That paint was so, the wood was so old, it took us three weeks to paint it and about six coats. And I thought it was going to take three days, so that kind of hurt my summer a little bit.
Thirsty wood, huh?
Thirsty wood. That's what it was, yeah. So that's the outside. And what I tried to do here is I tried to match that fourth-grade wing colors there. And I did. That's what I brought in to match. This is now what the interior looks like. We put a new floor in, a new ceiling, a new bathroom. We painted inside. We put new HVAC in. The HVAC bathrooms, painting inside and out. The ceiling and with Mike's team's help, we did all the technology the classrooms need these days. So it was a team effort. And the one classroom is ready to go. We could use it tomorrow if we wanted to. The only thing left really to do in this building is to move the storage, the file storages, files out of there and replace the windows and doors that actually I just worked with the team to order today. So that's going to take a while.
So right now, there's one classroom ready to go?
This one's ready. We just hang that TV and put, but there's no furniture for it.
And then the other one is, will continue to be used for storage?
No.
Or are you envisioning that becoming a classroom?
So there's a lot of moving parts. Thanks, that's a good question. The, those file storages need to be behind locked doors. So there was some underutilized space in the mezzanine of the transportation building that we're cleaning out. And we're building a cage there, so we have it locked. And as soon as that's done, which should be January or so, we're going to move the files into there. And then we're going to put a new floor in that room and make it look just like this one.
Excellent.
Okay? Something else we did this summer, this is a carbon filtration system that we installed in the basement of the elementary school. So we have super clean water now. Our water that comes in there is, goes through a particulate filter. Then it's UV-filtered, then it's chlorinated, and now it's carbon-filtered to remove any of those forever chemicals that might be in the groundwater now and in the future. So we, I'm confident that we have, we could sell the water, like Poland Springs.
I was going to say, we should put a bottle filling station? Like an assembly line down there?
Tiger Water.
Tiger Water, there you go.
Yeah, I like that.
Sold at lunch.
I like that.
Is that, that picture of, is that being dropped through that hole into the basement?
Six of them, yeah. So the water, after it goes through the particulate filter, the UV filter, the chlorination station, goes through three of those carbon tanks and has exposure to the carbon for between 10 and 15 minutes there. And then goes through, that same water goes through a second set of three of those big carbon things.
The life on these filters?
Well, you know, this is, that is...
New, right, so we don't know.
Well, it depends on how much of the forever chemicals come in. It's like a sponge, the carbon, and it's going to absorb that. The engineers designed these carbon tanks to last at least a year. Not the tanks themselves, the carbon inside. So after about a year, we'll have to get a company, that I'm getting a quote from now, to come in, suck all the spent carbon out of all these six filter, these six canisters, and then put brand-new carbon in. I'm, it's going to be an expense. The spent carbon is, needs to be incinerated. It can't be just burned, and it needs to be taken away. It's going to be, I'm getting, I'll get you guys a number when I have it. But my rough guess is it's going to be about $40,000 a year to deal with this carbon.
And David?
Yeah?
This was a major expense, I know that. And this was due to the new requirements by the state? Correct me if I'm wrong, concerning that foam that fire departments have used to put out fires? That chemical, that's part of that? That's why we had to do this?
Well, right. We, there was a requirement in the summer of 2020 that came down from the state for us to start testing for PFAS and PFOA. And we had to test by February. In the summer of 2020, we had a few things going on around here. But we, since I do, we do have Kerry, our, you know, an in-house plumber who's qualified to do it. I decided to test in August, even though we weren't required to test till February. So we discovered about 47 parts per trillion, which is trace amounts of this stuff. But anything over 10 parts per trillion, we had to take action. And so we worked with the Department of Health and Water System Engineers. And we hired our own water system engineers to design this system to pull out 100% of it. And, you know, right. And so new EPA regulations are not going to allow you to have any of this stuff in your water. That's going to come down in about six months. This system that we have in place is a first of its kind, maybe in the country. It's definitely the first of its kind in New York State. So Putnam Valley is way, way ahead of the curve on this. It'll be a big, it'll be a big deal in the coming years, I'm pretty sure.
I think it's huge. I just wanted those who might be watching the program to understand that we're not just throwing money out. We didn't do this on a whim. We did this because it's a necessity. And it's also a health issue.
And I will tell you that this system installed with the engineering costs and that is, cost us about $100,000. If we didn't do it in-house, if we didn't have Kerry, we bought this equipment directly from the manufacturers. We had our in-house plumber install it. We probably saved $150,000 or $200,000 by doing that in-house, by having our guys do it, so...
Excellent. And demand is not nearly as high as it will be when the regulation's going to affect, so...
You're not kidding?
Yeah. Prices are going to be even worse going forward.
Yeah, so we're ahead of the game here. I'm really happy this is finally done.
Tiger Water.
So more outside opportunities. This is the courtyard at the elementary school. Part of that COVID relief money, we're, we've designed and have ready for next summer to build this out as a really cool courtyard for teachers to bring their students. And it's kind of what we had envisioned when we built that, the Maker Space Room back there. Because that white door there, it goes into that space. So when the kids can be in there and then they come out and use this courtyard area as some outside space there. So future capital project ideas, and these are ideas. Money's not spent yet, okay? So these are just concepts. The high school roof, now, there'll be a little bit of a theme here. This high school, everybody thinks is a brand-new high school. It's 22 years old. And projects we're thinking about now won't happen for a couple of years. It'll be 25 years old by the time this stuff happens. This, we actually went out to bid on doing several sections of the roof and then realized about six months ago, and there was all supply chain stuff there and the roofing supplies. So we rejected the one bid. We got it. We thought it was too expensive. And they couldn't get the materials we wanted. And now we're thinking of replacing all of the curved roof areas. If we go back here, this high school was designed to, the architects thought it would be, the green curved areas were representing the hills of Putnam Valley. were representing the hills of Putnam Valley. And that blue that goes through the main entrance down to the athletic entrance is actually the hollow brook. So just so anybody knows, but the, the rolling hills are having trouble. So the rolling hills need to be, to be redone. So that's a project that, that we're, we're, we're going to be going out to bid on soon. This is the most urgent of all the future projects.
Dave, if you go to the next slide, you can see that the rolling hills are literally rolling off the building?
Yeah, see?
So you see those black spots? That's where the roofing material itself is sliding off the building into the gutter.
There's a gutter there that is covered by all of the roofing except that one little piece. You can see where it's sliding down from the top. We don't have any leaks over the, this is the locker room area over the gym. We don't have any leaks there now, but you can see it's not, it's not great. We, our leaks are in the library and, and the hollow brook leaks for some reason.
Now that, the roofing, I mean, that, that's a necessity. You lose your roof, you lose your building.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is something.
So there's, there's no question.
Again, and we got, we, we're, we're going to have 25 years out of this, this roof before we replace it. The athletic facility that looks beautiful from afar and we try to maintain it as best we can is also 22 years old. And you can see, you know, what's happening, that the fencing is, is, is getting in very rough shape. The track needs to be resurfaced. The turf, we replaced this eight years ago. I think our turf probably gets used more than any turf in the country. I know it's used all day, every day and weekends by tons of, so. My team has become experts at repairing turf that we look before every, every contest, we go out there and look around. And, and this is actually, Dave Cantrowitz had that hash mark in his hand, came out. We had to scramble and go glue it down before a game. So it's getting into be, to, a little bit beat up. So in about two years, we're going to need to replace that, that turf. So that's, that's something that I'm advocating for. And this is something that drives me crazy. We, we don't have a lot of flat ground in Putnam Valley. Our, our fields are really, we don't have enough fields for the usage. And so you can see these puddles are in lines where the football team practices because they're, a soccer team is on the turf and they're practicing the outfield of the baseball field. And then it's like a mad scramble to try to get the baseball field back in shape for the spring. It all depends on the weather and how we can do it. So this is something else I'd really like to, to address somehow. This is my own little pet project here, but this is the goat path to the turf. So this, that's the middle school gym up there and those doors are all fall and all spring. Tracy and Tark bring their classes and they all walk down. You can see, if you look closely next to that garbage can, you can see a, a path worn in that hillside. And so when it's wet, I personally fell on my butt on that hillside and I'm like, this has got, something's got to be done here. So I think, you know, some stairs for safety and, and that, and convenience and it'll look better if, if we, if we get some stairs down there. And that's from the top looking down, the same goat path. And asking people to walk all the way around is, it just doesn't, doesn't, doesn't happen. And this is another area that drives me crazy. It's, it's, it's the back end of the middle school. It's, is where we put stuff that we don't want people to see, basically, garbage and everything. And know that the high school has no back end of the building, right? There's no area like that for here. So this is for both, this is the whole campus. So I'd like to, you know, I'd like to make kind of a yard here, close it in, maybe put item four or blacktop in there and, and hide it and neaten it up and make it look better. Something that's on my list. The parking lot, again, 22 years old. So this retaining wall, you'll notice it now that I'm showing you these pictures, but it's, it's not retaining anymore. So it's, it's crumbling. And that's not because the students are hitting it with their cars, it's just because it's, it's kind of eroding there. The parking lot.
That's for the most part.
That's for the most part, yeah, there's a few little fender benders out there. But the, the parking lot also, we, we do have water issues that we've been addressing as best we can. But there's a lot of water that runs underneath this whole campus and underneath this parking lot. And, and it's to the point where patching i- is not going to do it for much longer here. So we're going to need to repave the parking lot. See, that's collapsing around that catch basin. Something else we're, we're thinking.
Wait, I'm sorry.
Yep, sure.
Do we have in a timeline for when we think the solar project that's happening behind our campus will be? No, this, it's been, I think it's been approved, but when they're going to start working on that? And the impact of, you know, the change in the water direction and everything that we're so worried about?
I'm worried about it and I, I don't, I don't know when that construction's going to start. I don't know if they have their approvals in place, all of them to get it going yet. But we have put some curtain drains on the, on that side. And when I, I have walked the parking lot with in-site engineers and expressed to them in the strongest terms how much I need to divert the water around this, these buildings around and, and around that. So we're, we're, we're planning that because whatever happens with the solar farm to increase it, it's already a problem. So, you know, so we need to address it and address it aggressively and, and we will. So when that gets redone. Something else, I'm sure you're all aware, we have, we use no oil. I've said it other, no oil here on this campus. We haven't in 20 something years. We are all on geothermal. The elementary school campus building, we do use, we do have some geothermal, but we also still use these old oil burners down there. And I would love to switch to something cleaner and less expensive, more efficient by the time these oil burners need to be replaced. It's something we've been thinking about, I've been talking to Dr. Luft about it, whether we expand the existing geothermal fields. We had some engineers look at that. I walked, I walked the, the site with, with them a few weeks ago. They've come back with some rough budgetary numbers for us. And we're, we've asked them to go back to the drawing board a little bit to look at. We definitely have the capacity, we, the, the room, we could add enough wells, geothermal wells to, to do the whole building. It's just, it's going to be expensive. So we're, we're looking at whether to, to, to break that up into pieces because these oil burners, they still work. You know, you don't want to throw away something that, that's working, but we, we want to plan for the future. And again, you know me, I'd love to, love to get rid of the oil, so.
And to replace these burners would be incredibly cost prohibitive as well?
Yes, yeah. So there's these high efficiency propane burners, but you know, you're talking about a million dollars for that, you know? So if, when these go, we really have to take a look at, at, as a district, what we want to do there at the elementary school, whether it's, it's more, more efficient fossil fuel stuff or to try to get completely onto the geothermal. So transportation, again, thank you, Mike Lee, for your Transversa software. And that's one thing we've done in transportation. Something that we're, we're investigating is this, there's been a lot of talk about electric buses out there and you know, that's one of, one of my things is, is the sustainability stuff. So investigating this, we've, we've talked to electrical engineers and had them look at our, what we can do. And, and as you guys know, and I don't know if the public knows this, we have a hybrid system where we have a contract bus company that, that, Orange County right now, that, that has all the large buses, that does do the to and from school routes, right? The big buses. And then our in-house Putnam Valley School District has 13 of those 20 passenger vans and then three of the large buses, right? So we have a hybrid system. So if we're moving towards electric, you know, one of the issues is, you know, you can't have electric buses charging in Montrose and have them come here and burn half of their range before they get here. So we'd have to deal with, with charging all of the buses for our, our students, right? And that, we don't have the, the juice here to do that. We've looked at it, we, we don't. It is probably, will be available in the future and, and will be expensive to put in. So that's, and in looking at it, these buses are about $400,000 to get a bus. They're about 100,000 to get a gas bus, 400,000 for an electric bus, and they're not available, so. And, and so, but what I, what I've been talking to Dr. Luft about and thinking about is, is, is kind of more biting off what we can actually chew now. And, and some, replacing some of our 20 passenger vans that do these. We, we do a lot of the, the trips to special schools and around down in White Plains or Connecticut and, and those schools. And a lot of times there's only one or two students and one or two aides on the bus with the driver. So we were thinking about maybe replacing some of those vans with, with minivan or, or passenger vans, smaller passenger vans that could be electric. And Mike, Mike Koenig and I went and we, we went to some dealers and those aren't available either. There's nothing available right now. But we did check and we do have the electricity to do some level two or level three chargers at the transportation building, enough to accommodate a small portion of our fleet. And then down the road, when it becomes economically feasible, you know, and hopefully we get a lot of money from the state or the feds or something to, to allow us to, to transition to, to electric buses. They're saying 2035.
The state hasn't mandated this though, yet.
They're talking about 20, they put a date out there, 2035, when we're supposed to, but that, I mean.
So ludicrous, I swear to God.
I don't know. I have to start looking, right?
Yeah, I, I know, but you know, the, the state in their infinite wisdom, some of these things just make me personally crazy. Where's, where's the grid that's going to power our electric charging stations?
We'd have to build one. We'd have a run somewhere.
There you go, Joe. Build it and then do this, you know? I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, it's okay.
Go ahead.
It's okay, I've been looking at this a lot.
So how do you?
I've heard all of those. And, but I, before we go to questions here, I just want to, you know, really all of these, these accomplishments in, in facilities and how great this place looks and, and, and how, how much we're moving forward, in my opinion, as to the, the, the quality of the infrastructure of this campus. It's all due to the staff that, that I have. And, and I don't have a list of their names, I usually do that in my budget presentation. But, but I want to thank my staff, you know, from the, the, the transportation folks to the, to the, to the drivers, to cleaners, custodians, you know, everybody that, that works in, in my operations group. Wonderful, there's been a wonderful culture before I got here and, and hopefully I've taken that to, to another level. And they've been great. And particularly, I want to thank Mary Bondi. She was my senior assistant. She has shepherded, I think, five facilities directors through this school and, and she's a senior office assistant in operations. And she does a heck of a job. The district owes her a, a, a big, a bunch of gratitude. She's been wonderful to me and we're going to, we're going to miss her greatly. She's, she's been, she's been great and she's retiring as of like next week. So that's why I wanted to mention her, her now, so. Any questions?
Thanks, Dave. Just before questions, just wanted to do a couple of quick disclaimers. So I know I want to reiterate something that Dave has said several times before any of these slides go viral on Facebook. Right, everything at the end, the future project section are just simply projects in which we have our eyes on, right? That are on our radar that we're exploring. The list is not meant to be all inclusive. I'm sure there are many projects hanging out there that were not included. And I'm sure some of the projects that we discussed will not get done in the immediate future, right? These are just sort of things that we are looking at. We thought it was prudent to get some of these things out to the community and out to the board. But certainly there is no money budgeted, there is no projects underway, there are no plans being written. This is really just sort of the exploratory phase. We're entering the exploratory phase as to what of these should we do? What of these can we do? What of these can we afford to do? Before any, like Dave had mentioned, those projects are years down the road. But this is the time when you have to start having those conversations. If you want to accomplish a project, years down the road. So that is the big disclaimer here.
And where is the community input going to be in this, looking at these projects?
So when we're ready, and we're not ready yet, our first step will be to, will mimic very similar to what we did last time we had a facilities project. So our first action will be a invite for public to participate on a facilities planning committee. So that facilities planning committee would be open to any community members that wanted to join. We would explore each of those items that Dave has shared this evening. And then we would certainly open it up to the members of the facilities planning committee if there is any other projects that we should be considering. That's a really fun process. You spend like hundreds of millions of dollars and then you realize that you can't afford all these things, right? So then you start the prioritization, what's most important, what's most impactful to our students? What's most essential for our infrastructure, our buildings? And you work your way back down from there and you get to a price that you think is affordable. And then you, then, then the next phase is getting community buy-in and input and going that way. So just what I had shared, we're already over a year down the road from now. But the first step of that process will be to develop a facilities planning committee in 2018. That's what we did and it was a greatly beneficial group to work through that project.
And is it safe to say that none of the projects would require a bridge or road to be closed for an extended amount of time?
Good point, Joe. You know, the, the one caveat that we need to follow, and, and Dr. Luft, you know, I've, I've shared this with you and the board. These are tough economic times, so we need to look at what really needs to be replaced. For instance, the roof, that, that's mandatory. There should be no argument. You, you need to go ahead with that, David, and take care of it because again, roof goes, your building goes. That's a necessity. Heating is a necessity. And I absolutely agree, the, the geothermal is a much better alternative to propane or oil burners, you know, sitting in your basement. Other things we need to look at because these are difficult times for our community. You know, besides the inflation, you know, they're talking about a rather large possible recession, 2023. So we need to just tread easily, and I like the idea of doing a committee, Dr. Luft, I agree with you, to explore each item and see what really is necessary and what could be on hold until the economic times improve.
So we're trying to capture the money involved with inflation with the savings of the recession on construction costs, though. We're just trying to time that perfect.
It's going to be cheaper during the recession, I can tell you that.
Trying to find the sweet spot, right, between the inflation and the recession.
I know.
So the other, the two last pieces that Dave had spoken about is, and we're very actively pursuing, obviously the buses and the transportation, like that is a, a dream unless there are substantial subsidies coming from the state or the government. So investing in a $400,000 bus to replace a $100,000 bus is just simply not practical before we even look at the amount of money it would cost with the electrical infrastructure in, right? So that's something that we're awaiting sort of subsidies to, to make any of that affordable. I think the same is true for the geothermal. I think what's transpiring in Ukraine and all the conversations about dependence on fossil fuels. And I just think that's going to lead to a much broader conversation regarding sustainable energies, renewable energy sources. And I would love for there to be grant funding or subsidies available for us to do the work at the elementary school. There's things out there for residential, there's some things out there for commercial, but it's miniscule in comparison to the scope that we would need. So we're working closely with our architects to explore any potential funding. There is some funding available to high needs districts of which we do not currently qualify to do this type of work. But again, we're optimistic that, that pool of money will continue to grow and that we could find some source of revenue for the school district to be able to complete work that we think will greatly benefit our buildings and maybe more so our community.
Tiger water.
And we'll sell tiger water.
We'll solve everything, Joe. That's the one, that's the idea. That's the idea. Any other questions?
Thank you, David.
Thank you for you and your team. I appreciate that.
So similar to Mike, sorry, you're not done yet. I thought there was gonna be questions. While you get to stand up here and present all the pretty pictures, I do recognize and certainly set the vision for all this work that's done. And I know you had mentioned these, like Michael, in any service industry, the individuals who make all of this happen are, again, those who are oftentimes behind the scene. So I do want to again acknowledge all of our custodial, our buildings, our grounds workers that go above and beyond, right? There is in many buildings, they are not doing construction, they're not hanging smartboards, they're not hanging scoreboards, they're not building gardens. They're not doing many of the things that are extremely talented, extremely loyal staff members do to better our buildings. And just as a quick aside, we had recently a couple of groups from Garrison come in, the students and the and the parents. And although we have the luxury of having a 22-year-old high school, many of the comments from the parents were like, this thing looks like it's a year old. It's amazing the condition that this building is in, being 22 years old. And again, that's another testament to the work of the individuals we have here in our district. So I did want to follow your lead and acknowledge those individuals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, David, I have to tell you, I walk up at the elementary quite often. I like that area. Brings back a lot of memories to me. And to see that pond active again, that little pond? I mean, I shared the story before that it was a ninth graders back in 1961, 1962 that went out there, you know, the the they didn't call it the environment club, I forget what they called it, the nature club. And they built the pond.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
A little cement pond.
It was done with custodial.
I know. That's great.
Custodial support and these ninth graders because we housed K through nine at that building at the time. And to see it back in shape and that whole area cleared out, made to an outdoor classroom, I it's a point of pride. Our campuses, this and the elementary, are second to none. And that's kudos to you and your team. You've done a beautiful job.
Thank you.
True.
Thank you very much. And that pond, they did a really good job because it was full of dirt and weeds and everything. And I we dug it out, I'm like, you know, I wonder if it will hold water.
And it does.
And I filled it, it held water like crazy. So I was like, okay. I don't have, I was gonna, I was thinking about putting a liner or something in or spraying, but it.
It used to have a faucet built in it.
I'm still working on some things.
You know, it would fill from the building, you know, turn it on.
I need to get a bubbler in there.
Thank you, David.
A bubbler.
Thank you.
A koi fish.
Okay, we're gonna move into the second reading of our admission of non-resident student policy. How's, do we have to read it out loud? What like what's?
Nope.
We do not? Does anybody have any questions about it?
Nope.
There were no changes from the last reading, correct?
No changes.
No changes.
Okay.
We're good.
Then we're gonna move to student reports.
Okay.
You're up, Em.
Well, I think mainly we just wanted to talk about how like our big buddy program showed around the Garrison kids. And like, I know that you guys more so got results from the parents, but the kids were thrilled, I want to say, especially with the media rooms and like our wellness center. They were just like thrilled and they thought, oh, and the woodshop room. They, these are opportunities that they've never seen before. So the fact that our district offers it, I think, is going to be a big draw here.
That's great.
I just wanted to note that the stars of the show, as always, were our student ambassadors who were walking around the students and the parents. And I, like a proud father, was sort of following around a group of parents that evening and just watching our students give a tour of their own building and the amount of pride they have and and just sort of the side notes they're carrying on and they're telling stories. And by the end of the evening, I had witnessed one of the parents from Garrison just give all three of the students huge hugs and like thanked them for. And then she asked me if she was allowed to tip them as tour guides. I told her, I explained I was not comfortable with her tipping us for the volunteer hours. But it was really an impressive thing to see our students totally running the show and taking these parents around all of the buildings and really asking questions like, what's the student culture like, right? There was, there was some interesting questions that were asked of our students and they always impressed with their answers.
I'm sorry Christian's not here tonight because I I saw that he was the winner of the aspire contest and I was gonna ask him to talk about his photograph. Do you know when that ceremony is gonna be, when they're gonna hang it or what?
I don't know.
Okay. I didn't see that and I just, I was gonna embarrass him, but he's not here. I'll do it the next, do it the next meeting.
So I got a question for you. Did you go to the assembly today?
I did go to the assembly.
So what were your thoughts?
Honestly, I cried like a couple times. It was really sad. But I talked to like a lot of my friends about it and we thought it was just really great that like, I talked to my sister, he was, she was like, he's so cool. And I think that that's something that we usually don't get from like people who come to speak to us because it's more just, oh, like they're trying to tell us something, but the fact that we actually thought he was cool and like a nice guy. I think he probably spoke to more students than we usually would. So he identifies with us more, I think, than most of the people who are just kind of, I liked how he said like the valedictorians kind of just, there was a valedictorian that died because of a heroin overdose. And I think it's nice to see that even when you are in like such a great position, sometimes you just aren't. And he had like so many downfalls in his life and still he was at the same spot as someone who was valedictorian, captain of the cheer team and things like that.
Thank you. So many of us up here at the table had the opportunity to see him for the first hour of his presentation this evening to parents. So I saw someone come down, I think he might have just finished upstairs. But we're talking about Michael DeLeon from Steered Street and I was in awe. Like I looked at my watch and I was like, oh, my God, I have to leave. It's 6:55, I want to leave. Like I wanted, so I'm anxious to hear how the rest of it went. But I think the parents in the room and any of the adults there were equally in awe of his story and his mission and all he hopes to accomplish on behalf of children. And he kept reminding us that while children take are 25% of our population, that they're 100% of our future. And going into all the stats regarding fentanyl deaths and poisonings associated with students within that, with children within that age group, it was really eye-opening to many people there. So I was just curious to hear a student perspective as to if you guys got as much out of it as I believe the parents upstairs this evening did.
Yeah, and I can't speak for all students because he did tell a story of a student that posted like making fun of him on a Snapchat story and not at the school, obviously, at another school. But so obviously, it doesn't speak to everybody the same, but hopefully like he did impact some students.
Okay, we're going to move into new, oh, no, the superintendent's report, I was gonna skip right over to Jeremy. There you go.
All right. So my first note was what we just quickly discussed regarding this Steered Street and Michael DeLeon upstairs. It was, again, eye-opening for all those who were involved. And I really didn't want to leave, but I had to go to a board meeting, whoever scheduled this board meeting.
Well, and to that point, I mean, we really, we've tried really hard to not schedule two things at the same time. This was just unavoidable. And because it was best for parents from six to eight, we left it at that time and and we just had to miss part of it, you know, so.
That's why all the parents came to the board meeting afterwards. Yeah, no, I know that it was rescheduled and our schedules are limited because we needed, he actually was here all day, right? He met with students, he stayed and did work with the teachers during the professional development after school, so, and then parents this evening. So it was, it's a lot to coordinate to get someone there for the entirety of the day and into the evening. So this was the date we landed on and we did explore change in the board meeting, but that just didn't seem practical. So I did want to just quick, give a quick shout out to, I attended the New York State School Board Association Annual Conference up in Saratoga. And I did want to quickly recognize our own Jackie Levine, who presented to a standing room only about district ambassadors and creating your brand and mission. So it was really well received. She keeps reminding me that her feedback was above average for those who attended her conference, based upon the thing. But it was a great experience, opportunities to attend multiple workshops, get to speak with superintendents, cabinet members and board members from across the state. And I think Barbara's gonna go to next year's one in Buffalo.
I know, I saw that.
It's out of mine.
Right now, who's knowing?
It's out of my radius. So it's hard to believe that we spoke so much about this leading up, the first responder appreciation events, but we have not yet met since those events took place. I again want to thank everyone in our community who serves as a first responder, everyone who participated in any of the events, whether the elementary school classroom visits, the middle school, high school apparatus and equipment event, or the the football game recognition. I know our numbers continue to go up. Unfortunately, the weather was a little bit of a damper on our apparatus and equipment. Unfortunately, the helicopter wasn't able to come because of the weather. But we're gonna continue to seek new, new individuals, new equipment. I'm actually working really hard to get some military personnel here. May or may not be able to get a Black Hawk helicopter to land on our property, that's my wish list. But we're gonna continue to grow this each year as we take time to celebrate the first responders in our community. The Putnam Valley Education Foundation held their trunk or treat event. I've never in my life seen so many people at a trunk or treat event. It was absolutely packed, the weather was beautiful, and I'm sure they did very well in terms of raising funds that will ultimately come back to our school and our students. We also had our elementary school Halloween parade, which is a highlight every year. They parade up through the, by the district office and it's just a great opportunity to see students in their costumes, smiling, and of course, the adults dress up as well. Jackie buys every remaining costume from the Halloween store and then begs people in district office to wear them. People come along and it's a great event. Our high school did their fall drama, the Laramie Project. I did want to take an opportunity to congratulate the cast crew and Dr. Masero's a very powerful play, very powerful messages, and I think very well received amongst everyone who attended. We held our November Conference Day. Our elementary school did some scholastic professional development and then held their parent teacher conferences in the afternoon. Our middle school did some core, district core values and then worked on the middle years program. High school had IB rotations, TOK, which is Theory and Knowledge, CAS, Creativity, Activity and Service, and Group Four Project. And then other professional development opportunities included CPR, AED, the Ben Q Training, as Mike had spoken about, TCI Training, Roundtable, Behavioral Scenarios and ENL Instruction. Veterans Day has passed, so I do want to again thank all the veterans in our community. It's a special day for my family as well. As I like to brag about, I had a brother who gave up a baseball scholarship to college and joined the Marines. Being able to go to his graduation from Paris Island remains one of the proudest moments of my life. He missed my wedding because he was deployed and wrote his speech before he left. But his his pitcher, like many of the others, adoring the the roads of Putnam Valley, his is on the way up to Lake Peas Hills and that many people see it. I'm trying to get him a better location. Apparently, that's, I don't have enough pull for that. But again, I thank all the veterans in the community. I know we have many, I know Sam is one right here, for your service that you've given to this country. We've spoken a couple of times about the Garrison students came to visit. They began in the pack. We had a multitude of teachers and clinicians come in and speak with them regarding their topics. And then our big brothers, big buddies program took them around the building in groups and they got to sort of see the day in the life of a Putnam Valley student. I don't know if I've ever met such a polite group of eighth graders, but they were extremely appreciative, they they were engaged, they asked very intellectual questions. And I was really impressed by how interested they were to hear more about Putnam Valley. That evening was our parent visit at 5:58. There was six Putnam Valley employees and two Garrison mothers. I got concerned. But ultimately, I think we ended up with approximately 14 families that were there. And it was, again, a great opportunity for us to share some of the many amazing things that are happening. And as I mentioned before, the students, again, stole the show with their tours of the building.
To just add into that, if even with 14 being low, there's only an N of 25 or 26.
29 students in the current eighth grade class. So 27 of those students were here and about 14, so almost half the families came to check out Putnam Valley, which I was, I was thrilled about. We've had during our AM meetings, we've been having presentations by David Shaw. So our last couple of presentations included Title IX, DASSA Title IV, and then Conducting Investigations. So those will continue. It's a great refresher for many of our administrators, especially those who are new to the positions. Our middle school, as noted by the water bottles on display, Friday is the 50th day of school and we'll be celebrating the 50th anniversary of Putnam Valley Middle School, one's Putnam Valley Junior High School. So I know there's a variety of activities planned. Mr. McCarty and some teachers participating. I know the students are gonna dress up like 1972 when the building was opened and celebrate in a variety of ways there. And we're also looking at ways to invite back members of of that class and classes after them. I know Maureen's been going through the archives, we've been finding all these old photos, class photos from back in the 70s and 80s.
I think they prefer the term classic instead of old.
Class.
Classic photos, not old photos.
I thought you said I called someone old. So I'm a little offended because someone in the office asked if that was my graduating class, which I definitely didn't graduate in the 70s or 80s. But more to come on that. And, oh, the elementary gym show was last night. So as an elementary gym show veteran, I am very passionate about it. We keep, every time I run into someone else who went to Putnam Valley, we're reminiscing about what we did when we were in the gym show. I believe I was juggling apples while eating them. That was my universe, my one and only talent, I guess, with the unicycles and all that other good stuff. Just a tremendous event and a great opportunity for students to come out and showcase some of their talents. And then I did want to quickly turn it over to Natalie, who's gonna talk a little bit about community outreach in the holiday season. Thank you.
So I asked our clinical staff as we approached the holiday season to put together the resources that we offer for our community. So I just wanted our community members to know that if you are in need of any kind of help over the holidays, to please feel free to reach out to our clinical staff or the front office staff. So there's a long list, so I'll just briefly go through some of the things that our, our teaching staff and our CSEA members. School is never just about academics, right? Obviously, we we deliver academics, but we also look to our, our teaching staff and our CSEA members always look to help over and outside of school when they can. So the Character Education Department does Thanksgiving food drives, so they collect lots of items, food items, and we, they donate it to the Putnam Valley Food Pantry. Holiday Helpers is a program that really just, if a family is in need for whatever reason, they are struggling in a particular year, they will assist with gifts for students so that they have a holiday in their, in their home. They collect unwrapped gifts that are donated to the women's shelter. Lots of our staff donate these things and then look for, to community members that can afford to do that. And then they deliver them to the women's shelter. They also put together a newsletter that lets parents know exactly where to access these types of things if they don't feel comfortable coming to the school. So that has information like Putnam Community Action Partnership, which is called CAP. They offer lots of different services to families who are in need, especially around the holiday season. The middle school and the elementary school participate in, both do this newsletter and make sure that families have those resources at their disposal. The middle school also does a gift card collection from all the staff to, so that they can offer that to families. Ongoing referrals to the local food pantry and CAP. Really talking with students about holiday self-care and that if you Really talking with students about holiday self-care and that if you really are struggling in your home around the holiday season, for whatever reason, where to do, where to go, what to do, how to take care of yourself, and to reach out to others during the holiday season. They do a coat drive, a food drive. They use, the high school also does, actually, the National Honor Society coordinates the following, they do a, they donate food pan, food to the food pantry at St. Mary's, the PV Veterans Coat Drive, Maria Ferrari Children's Hospital, the toy drive there. They do fundraisers possibly for certain families that are in need. They do letters for Rose, which is letters to go to a local nursing home so people have some joy and things in our local nursing homes. The faculty adopts students that are in need and puts together holiday things for them. The staff also create opportunities for students to become snow angels, so, and this is really, our students will offer services like snow shoveling to our elderly community members that are in need, or all different types of services to maybe child, you know, babysitting services, things like that, really just to give back to our community. So even though this is the holiday season and there's more activity, this, these kind of things go on, as we know, all year, but especially during the holiday season, we want people to know that we have access to certain things to help them throughout the holiday season.
And if people want to contribute?
Yep, they can certainly contact our, our front office staff and ask who they can reach out to, but our clinical staff often is available to facilitate donations, for sure. And I do want to thank our faculty and staff for doing all this work. I know that it certainly, it also feels good to do this work, and they certainly take a lot of pride in assisting our families.
I didn't see, they used to do a pajama drive here at the high school right about now.
I'm not sure if it's a different time of year, but they do, they do do pajama drive, yes.
I actually believe that's just like later in January, after the holidays.
Oh, after the holidays, okay. I knew it was sometime in, it was cold weather, but I couldn't remember when. Okay, so let's move on to new business.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of teaching assistant Patricia Saffell from the district for the purpose of retirement effective the close of business on June 30, 2023, as per document number 10623 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I just want to thank Pat Saffell for her many years of dedicated service to the school district. I know she's been a staple at the elementary school for many years and certainly will be missed in her retirement.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of lunch monitor Amanda Echavaria from the district effective November 18, 2022, as per document 110/23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept a very generous donation with an approximate value of $28,829.97 from Peter Saranita of Huntington, New York, which includes sound effects, library, items to be used at Putnam Valley High School as per document 111/23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second. Questions or comments? I looked at the list and couldn't figure out what half, maybe 90% of it was, but I think this is a very generous donation, and we are very grateful to him for. Can I ask Dan how this came about?
Dan, I'm going to have to yell you to come over to the mic like you normally yell at other people. Can you do that and at the same time?
For $29,000 worth.
Don't let her push buttons. We'll have Mike push any buttons that have to be pushed.
So I've been doing the board meetings for actually about 19 years now, and I think this is the first time I've actually had spoke to the board.
We'll make it a regular tradition. On mic, I mean on microphone.
Every 19.
You spoke to us, but you're not on a microphone.
Yeah. Pete is a friend of a friend, and we were doing some work, and he was asking what I was up to and what I was doing, so I explained all the work that I do here at the school and with the students in the film and media courses that I help with instruction for. And unfortunately, during COVID, the studio he was working at went out of business, so he had this material, and he wanted to go to a good home as it's quite valuable, and he thought that the students could utilize this, so he asked, he offered it to me, and I said, "Of course."
Great, great. So are the kids excited? Do they know it's coming, or?
Some of them do. They're interested, they're going to help me digitize it. It's mostly CDs with sound effects for Foley work, so if, you know, like the classic of window breaking, right? We're not actually going to break a window. That's a safety concern here, but you can have on one of the CDs, there'll be like a variety of different sounds of glass smashing or something like that. They can take that and then use it in their film, so it's all sorts of stuff, you know, bouncing balls, car horns.
That's so cool. So primarily, that's what they are, they're digitized sounds?
Yes.
Not physical equipment, not?
No.
Okay, yeah. It's medium.
It's a few hundred CDs that we now have to digitize, yeah. It's two giant boxes of stuff to come through.
Can you get his address to Maureen? You have it? So we'll write him a letter. Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
You're hired. Next meeting, you'll speak again.
That is Dan honey.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the second reading of revisions to policy 5252, admission of non-resident students as per document number 105-23 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. I would like to open it up for public comment on any topic. Are you coming to the? Make sure you introduce yourself.
Jeannie Denike. I work in the district office. I no longer have students that attend the Putnam Valley schools, but I attended the parent presentation upstairs, and I was blown away. Actually, Mr. Turner was upstairs and stayed to the end with me, so if you want to jump in here and say anything, Mr. Turner, let me know. We talked about it after. It was great, very powerful. I hope parents feel empowered, there's strength in numbers. Raising children is not something you should do in isolation. We need to support each other in that process. I wish more parents came out tonight. I wish more parents came out. I hope if there are parents listening, watching this board meeting, if you are interested in these conversations regarding risk factors that face our young people, please email me, jdenike, D-E-N-I-K-E, at pvcsd.org, and I will help to put you in touch with committees we have here in the school district. We have a health advisory committee. We work with, we have a coalition, communities that care, that all of the Putnam Valley high schools have. I encourage parents to get involved in these conversations. We're stronger together. I thought the presentation was great. I did not see the student presentation, but the message tonight to parents was very different than the message to the students today. And the message to students today, am I right, Mr. Turner, was really to ask for help if they need it, and for the students to feel empowered, and really powerful messages. So I know our school is in the process of working with Putnam County to do this risk assessment survey that we do regularly. It's anonymous. I would say our surveys over the last several years were right in line with what Mr. DeLeon was talking about tonight. That is valuable information we get from our students because, and he said it right at the start, what we can do is decrease the risk factors and increase the protective factors, and increasing the protective factors is a community endeavor. I just wanted to share, I thought he was a really fabulous presenter, very credible, so thanks for bringing him in.
Sorry, Jeannie's a little taller than I am, so I'm going to lower that down a little bit. So to piggyback off of that, I had the opportunity of not only seeing the parent version tonight, but also seeing the student version as well, and I got to tell you that empowerment is an understatement. It was really, it was beyond developmentally appropriate. These kids were able to see and hear these authentic experiences from somebody who has lived this life and faced these struggles, but Mike was so good at telling these kids that, listen, like, point blank, I could take your vape, I could take your marijuana, I could take your cup of alcohol, you're going to get a new one. You're going to get, you're going to get something else if you want it, but if you're, if you're empowered and you feel strong enough with yourself about making the right decisions from the get-go, then this isn't going to be a problem down the road. So he preached to the kids, and I think you'll agree with me, right, that it was about the choices you make and the decisions that come from those and the consequences of those actions. He was very, very strong in telling these kids that we want what's best for you, but we can't do what's best for you. He really, he really drove it home that the ball is in your court, and he did an incredible job at doing so, and the stories that he shared were, it was difficult for some of us to hear, but it was powerful and it was meaningful, and I can't even express how grateful I am that I got to hear it for the ninth and 10th graders. I got to hear it as a faculty member this afternoon in the high school, and I got to hear it as a parent. You know, I spoke to some parents afterward tonight, and they had said, like, you know, my kids are in their late twenties and early summer in their late twenties and early thirties, and I'm so happy that they're through this, and I'm like, my, my son's nine months old and my daughter's four and a half, like, I don't know how I'm getting through this for the next 20 years. Like, what are you guys talking about, you know? But it was, it was nice to see the, the whole spectrum of what he had to share, because from, from the bottom to the top, from, from, you know, elementary to middle to high school to parenthood, it was all extremely powerful and meaningful, so we were, we were really, really appreciative of that, so thank you for that.
Dan, did he sell books at the end?
Did he sell books? He did not sell books.
But he talked about his book.
He talked about his book, but what he told us about his book was that, I believe he provided 160 copies to the district, but he literally said, and I believe his words were, "He'll give us 1,000 more and they'll be free." He's not selling anything. He does have a book for sale. He does have a book for sale, the Table Talk Book.
But doesn't say how to get.
However, some of the other, the other resources that he had to offer, he's, 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 he's not doing this to.
But can we get those resources?
Absolutely. I believe actually, I put it on the floor, but I believe I have his resources over there, and we can definitely share them, of course, too, right? So we definitely have those resources. Email Mr. Mike.
What did he say? Has 286 or whatever conversations started? Like, how, you know, topics to talk?
So I.
Like, those, those, those are really helpful, I think, to parents.
So from the parenthood perspective, even though most of my parenting experience comes down to me saying, "No, don't do that, get off of there, don't touch that, it's hot, it can hurt," whatever, you know how it is.
Next 20 years.
Then, yeah, in a few years, I'm going to be having these conversations, but so much of what he had to say from a parenting perspective was about the communication and taking the time, finding the time, even though we all live these crazy busy schedules and these crazy lives, like, finding the time to talk to our kids. And he, he basically boiled it down to like, you can spare 15 minutes a day, something along those lines, I believe is what he said. And it wasn't about, at first, he said, "Well, all these, all these organizations recommend five meals a week." And that's hard for a lot of us as parents, as families, like, that's a lot to swing for everybody here. Five meals a week, I'm thinking, I can't even order pizza five days a week. I don't know if I'm going to have five meals with my family a week, but it was all about communication and taking the time to be open and honest with your family, and, and for me as an educator, like, being open and honest with my students and having conversations and building trust, and that's what it all boiled down to, and he really was incredible, and let's get him back next year, please. I thought he was really incredible, and as Mr. Denike said, let's get more people here next year to watch him, because it really was very empowering for, I think, both the kids and us as adults as well. So thank you again for giving us that opportunity.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
And Jackie, you want to talk about, yeah?
I just wanted to add that.
I don't think you're, are you on?
Is this on?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to add that we do have a box of books in the high school main office that, I don't know if it's the Table Talk Book, I'll take another look, but he did, their company did send us resources that we can either hand out to students or faculty or family members.
Want to talk about the next one?
Oh, yes. So on December 6th, we have another parent learning series opportunity, and that will be around social media and your child, and that will be again from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We will feature retired cyber crimes investigator, Tom Roedel, and we will also have parent roundtables will offer up scenarios that parents can unpack and discuss together about social media issues. So the presentation will be followed by parents actually talking to other parents about social media issues that come up and how they would resolve them in their home.
And that's at the middle school, right? And the.
Yes, that is at the middle school at this time, in case we have, unless we have a giant influx and need a bigger space.
Yeah, because if you, if you say, "Oh, darn, I missed it," well, there's another one coming up. I mean, like, you never know what you're going to learn, and these parent workshops that you're planning, I think, are great, and I hope lots of people take advantage of. Okay, any other public comments?
My name is Miranda Zaki. I have a kindergartner and an eighth grader, and Mr. Turner, I want you to know that you do have your students' trust. I heard your name a million times with 85 of them at my house, you, Mr. Grogan, and Mrs. Poust. That's what they talk about at 2:00 in the morning. So I'm here tonight because during our October 13th Board of Ed meeting, Joseph Ferrara stated he was happy to see 15 or so of our teachers on that night, but he wasn't sure why they were here. I, too, was happy to see them, and I'm happy to see them again tonight. However, I do know why they were here. See, during COVID, our teachers altered their home life, they're teaching ways, they tore it outside the box, some with broken hearts, from not being in their classroom with their children, you know, their comfort zones, many with their children, their own children at home. Now, since July, they continue to teach without their rightful contract, and we thank them as parents for that. I thank God they were safe at home, and so were our children during the height of COVID. It may have decreased, it may have decreased an even worsening influx in our emergency departments. See, it's very important to be in tune with what is going on in our school district with our teachers. We need to be in tune with our teachers, our children, and your parents, their parents at all times. It's vital to the success of our district, being in tune with the teachers, the children, and the parents, and what is going on. and the parents and what is going on. So if you don't know what's going on, it's a good thing to ask. I pray that our teachers and our parents can stand united with the center focus of our children. Oh, and I got a lot of feedback from the assembly today and the kids absolutely loved it. I mean, they're all talking to me at once, I can't filter it because they, you know, I have to go home and sleep and then separate it, but it, it truly was amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
I just wanted to take this opportunity to say, I could not agree with you more regarding our teachers. I, I agree 100%. We have some of the, some of the most fabulous teachers we could have. All of them are fabulous. So I, I could not be more proud of what this district was able to do during COVID and during these times. And certainly our teachers, our administrators, our staff members deserve the entirety of the credit for what we were able to do for the students of Putnam Valley. I think our test scores show, are evidence to the hard work, especially our elementary school teachers who had classrooms full of students every day, when many districts in our region had small numbers of students there twice a week. So again, I could not be more proud of our teachers and more appreciative of the work that they do. And I am equally optimistic that we can quickly settle the contract and move on forward. So, thank you.
Upcoming meetings? This is our one for November and we have one for December.
So our December meeting, we have our athletics update and our special education update. Coming up, December 16th is our next meeting. And Dan's going to come up and speak again. We're going to add that.
And then I guess we move into budget season.
Yep. So these are our last two reports for the beginning of the year and then shortly thereafter, probably the second weekend, second weekend, the second meeting in January, Jill and I will start laying out sort of the framework for the budget process and then budget presentations, which I'm hoping to switch up a little bit, how we do it, maybe make it a little more budget focused, a little less update focused. And that's something that I'll talk to Barbara and Joe in our next meeting about how we best want to present that information in more, through more of a budgetary lens than updates, which each of the buildings and departments are just completing now. So hopefully the fewer presentations, more in-depth of budget conversations for each. That's the hope.
Board member comments? Go ahead.
We received a great email from the PTA regarding some of the activities that they've been, that have been ongoing throughout the year, as well as the Winter Wonderland that's coming up on December 3rd from 2:00 to 4:00 PM at the elementary school. And I just want to encourage any of the elementary, the middle school parents, as well as the high school for PTSA, to get involved. Like Jeannie said, you know, we have to all be involved and talk and that being a part of the PTA, even if you can't volunteer throughout the year, if you just pick one activity to volunteer at, it makes a difference. So I just want to encourage that activity.
Yeah, when I saw the list of what they'd done already, I mean, I know they haven't found a time to meet, have a meeting, but they've found time to do all the other things that, that support our students. So it was really, we are so grateful to them.
I just want to, David left already, but I wanted to thank him and whoever else thought of that idea of the wall of plaques. I, I went to our 50th reunion at Lakeland High School over the summer and walked into the gymnasium and, and they did that very thing. The entrance to the gym at Lakeland High, the whole wall is covered with plaques and this is going back 50 years. Some of the really superb athletes at that time in 1971 saw their names on the plaques and they were presented from the very first day the school was open and plaques were awarded to the present and it covered almost the entire wall. And I'd love to see that downstairs continue. I, I love that idea because when alumni come back and they see, wow, they, I'm there, look at that, that's pretty impressive.
So along those same lines, I know, I think last night's meeting was the formal beginning of what would be an athletic Hall of Fame for Putnam Valley High School, specifically to Putnam Valley High School. And I just want to compliment David Kantrowitz, put together, him and Matt Mello, are a fantastic sort of framework. There's a governance board, there's voting members, there's all the sort of the rules, there's nomination forms, and it's something that I know will be shared in more detail with the community moving forward, but our hope is to honor our first inductees at the end of this school year during sort of the end of year athletics and it's something, athletics dinner. And it's something that we hope to continue, a nomination process and then vetting of those nominees by the voting members and then ultimately deciding each year moving forward. So I think it's something that we've discussed for a couple of years and we finally got the, it all up and running.
That's cool.
And it's going to be a really great opportunity. We had, Bill Conroy came back, he's a member, Pat Polino came back, myself, Matt Mello, Dave Kantrowitz, Jeannie Denike was there, Tracy Parson. So those are just some of the members of the committee, of the governance board, and then there's a separate voting committee as well.
Nice.
It'll, it's something to look forward to and a great opportunity for us to acknowledge some of the many amazing athletes that have come through Putnam Valley High School for the last 20 plus years.
Yeah, yeah, good. It kind of takes that long to be able to build up enough of a cadre of Hall of Famers.
Right.
Yep.
In June, right? They, the letter says.
June is my first one, so.
Yeah, that'll be nice. Okay. We did get an invitation to the gratitude festival, if you've, which the, the Tri-Am Music Honor Society puts on every year. They, they used to do it at the, out, the church out?
Yep, the Tompkins Cultural.
Right. But they've started doing it here after the pandemic and I will tell you that it, it is absolutely amazing. The variety of music, singing, as well as musicians in pairs and singly and in groups. The students coming back who have already graduated participating, really, at this time, it just fills you with such, well, gratitude, which is what the, the whole point is. So I would encourage anybody that can, it's Tuesday, the 22nd of November at 7:00 PM in the music room. The French and Spanish National Honor Society, we also got an invitation to that on the 29th. We missed the math one, but, you know, hopefully those students would know that we are supportive of them and proud of all that they've done to be inducted into the Math National Honor I'm going to take a course, the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association course on improving an array of, an array of outcomes, so they're still taking reservations if anybody wants to go. It's, it's, they're going to break up into smaller groups and all, my problem is always, well, I want to go to more than one group and how do I pick just one? But, but they should be good and you should have that information. I wanted to reiterate Jackie's, you know, the parent presentation on the 6th of December. On the 12th of December, the Lower Hudson Education Council is having, well, we're supposed to have a legislative panel that day with New York State legislators on issues of priority concern for public education. LHEC was still trying to reach newly elected members of the legislature who don't yet have a, they have an email address from their campaign, but they don't have one as a legislator, so they were trying to figure out how, how to get in touch with all of them. But it turns out that that day, the 12th, is also, there's some big, they're having some other kind of meeting where a lot of them have to go, so they may move it to December 15th, but you'll get, you should get notices. But if you're interested, just in listening to what your legislators have to say on school topics, it's, it's a really good night, you should sign up. And then on the 14th of December is the NISBA Budget Webinar. Sounds really boring, but again, it's legislative and state budget preview. What is the legislature and the state saying they want to do for education this year? It's important to hear what they have to say. So I would recommend any of those. When you get those, I know it's a lot, but it's the only way to keep really informed, so. Do you know when the Aspire thing is going to be? Okay.
Yeah, they sent an email announcing it, but they didn't say when it was going to be.
Didn't say when. Because I'm always very impressed when I've gone before for other students, so. Have you seen the picture? Do you know what it is?
I don't.
Yeah. I'll be surprised. Anything else? Joe? So I'd like a motion to adjourn the business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving and we'll see you in December.
And don't go to Buffalo.
No, don't, don't go anywhere towards.